The March 3rd, 2025 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. The first item of business is a briefing on purchasing thresholds by Ms. Earl.
Good evening, Mayor, Councils. So the papers that I just handed you is a copy of our current purchasing and procurement policy. It's not the entire policy, it's the addendum that specifically covers the purchasing limits. This was adopted in 2013. That said, the dollar amounts were adopted before that. So if you look on the second page of this policy, that's where you'll see the purchasing categories, which are described as small, medium, and large. And that's the section that I'm here to speak to you about tonight. So the reason I bring this to you is the small purchase is indicated as less than $1,000. So what this means for our staff is that anything over $1,000 requires a purchase order. And our purchasing policy requires all backup documentation for a purchase order. Long story short, it's quite the administrative burden. And when costs of goods have increased so much over time since this policy was first passed, pretty much every purchase we make when we're buying from a vendor is around $1,000. For example, a meeting that was had last week had food involved that was just over $1,000. So that meant we had to have a purchase order for that food, which means we also have to have three quotes for that same type of food that's available. Then you have to explain why you chose that specific restaurant that you decided on for that purchase because it was over $1,000. So all of that said, I'm bringing to you today a request to increase the purchase limits. So that request is intended to reduce administrative costs and burden, promote some efficiency, and just avoid that unnecessary burden for staff and vendors. Because we're also running into, in the medium purchase category, vendors who are no longer willing to give us a quote because we're getting a quote for every single thing we buy, instead of just, we're asking for explanations for everything. And this isn't to say that we won't ask for explanations or that we won't receive quotes for items. It's more to deal with that smaller or lower end of this policy. So I've done quite a bit of research with GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. There's a small government section in there, which consists of municipalities that have a population of around 25,000 or with employee counts of 500 or less. So very comparative to what we have here. And the common limits were between $5,000 and $10,000 for that purchase order requirement, that small purchase. I'm not asking for 10,000, but I would like to see something closer to that $5,000 small purchase, purchase order requirement. And by doing that, we would change the medium purchase to the 5,000 to 35,000, and then large purchase to 35,000 and over. And that would be for that bid process. So that requires competitive bids for purchases of equipment, things like that. In the comparisons, the city of Lewiston has, I can't tell you exactly what they have. They have 2,000 for their small purchase. That was updated in 2023. So I know everyone likes to see comparisons close to home. There are several other municipalities within the state that have 3,500, 5,000. So it's really, it's up to the municipality. The other part of this, when I talk about administrative burden, is when we're in the middle of audit, they take selections. So they could choose 30 purchases. Well, now we have to show that documentation for 30 purchases that were $1,005, $1,025. Purchasing a few tables for a meeting room is now just over $1,000. And we have to go and have all of this paperwork, which sometimes can be up to 30 pages of backup for a $1,000 purchase. So staff, as well as myself, are in agreement that it would be, it would promote efficiency in order to change these. So it is up to council entirely. These amounts, like I said, hadn't changed since at least 2013, although from what I could tell, those amounts hadn't changed from before this was adopted. But at least 2013 is when these amounts were decided on. And as we all know, we don't like to talk about, but inflation has happened, and the costs of goods have increased quite a bit since that time. So that's what I'm bringing to you for discussion and determination on whether or not I should bring it further.
Kelsey, I think I would just add too, it's not just, so you could have an item that might be under $1,000, but if you were to include the shipping cost, or if that item has a, some kind of service agreement or something like, you've got, and you're doing a contract for three years, you have to, so this might be for something that would require a bid, right? You could have, you could have something that's around 20,000, it's under the bid amount, but the moment you put in a three-year agreement with a service contract and, and the shipping costs on that item, you're getting up over that, which now requires you to go out to bid. We, I think a big piece of this is the challenge that we have with vendors. They just don't have the time. I was telling Kelsey today, one of the, one of the things that we can do is sometimes other municipalities will post their bid tabs, and there might be, in that bid tab, might be for a consulting service, and they'll go ahead and have, a bid that they did on a larger project will have some hourly rates. Well, you can take those hourly rates now, and that's sometimes the only way that we can get information, because they're not going to do it unless there is a bid amount that they're applying for. So it is challenges. The only other piece I wanted to add, Kelsey, was also the school department.
Yes, so this is a joint policy with the school department, so it would need to be adopted by both the council and the school committee. So it would go through here, I think first, then go to school committee. So it would be first reading, go to school committee, and then come back here for final adoption if it were to change. But we have had vendors refuse to give us quotes, and we're having to document that they're refusing to give us quotes, so that if it gets pulled in audit, we have, we have reasons for why we don't have enough quotes for some of those other purchases.
Counsel Walker.
Kelsey, I sure agree with you, because when I worked for the city, it was the same headache all the time. Had to be careful of that lousy $10, because it would run over, and you, and you don't understand it until you get the bill in the mail. So I agree with you, it's time to bring these up a little bit, so you got a little room.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Platts.
Thank you. I agree, I think there's several reasons, you know, why this limit should be raised. I'm not sure if I, you know, without discussion, I'm not sure if I quite support all the way up to 5,000. I think there's maybe a discussion somewhere between where we're at now and the number 5,000. The only other thing I would say is, I think before we vote on anything, I would love to see what the, what the spread looks like of percentage of expenses below 1,000, between 1,000 and 25 and 25 plus. If you can't get that exact, maybe there's a sample size you could take of 500 transactions, so we could see the spread. I'm just curious, like, how much administrative burden does it alleviate by moving the line from 1,000 to 3,000 or 4,000 or whatever?
Counsel Whiting.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment, I took a look at the HUD procurement standards. I remember a few years ago, they raised the small purchase limit to $100,000. Now, the Board of Commissions for the Housing Authority kind of choked on that, and I did too, I thought that was too high, but I think what you're proposing is perfectly reasonable.
Yeah, I can note that the federal guidance for the simplified acquisition threshold for 2025, the micro purchase threshold is from 10,000 to 15,000. That's federal. So their projects, their ceiling for simplified procedures is 7.5 million, but their micro purchase is 10 to 15.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I agree with Counsel Platts. I'd like to just see a little bit more information before just going to 5,000. I agree that it can be an issue, but I would just like to see if you got any documentation. How much is the city doing it before we just say, hey, you've got a, you've got the approval for $5,000, and then you can just go spend $5,000? You know, maybe, I would like to see a little bit more information before doing that, maybe somewhere in between that. Thank you.
The only question I have is, I don't see any differentiation in here between commodity purchases and services. This is all the same, correct?
Correct.
So I find that to be very unusual. No place I've ever worked in government or in the private sector bundles them together like that, right? So like commodity purchases tend to have a much higher threshold, because basically you're saying to someone, I want to buy X. It's all the same, they just give you the bid. So you can do it this way, but it seems like for commodity purchases, you would have a higher threshold, because you don't have the variability amongst what you're buying, like you would with a service contract.
Yeah. I mean, I can bring forward a change of policy to another workshop, you can, an example of policy with the suggested changes, potentially even including a differentiator between commodities. Several of those policies exist, most municipalities do have that, so can do that.
Yeah, so that would be fine. Any other questions or comments on this item?
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate the update. The next item is an update on the road assessment by Mr. Goyette.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. I have a short presentation that the vendor we are going with provided me with. Unfortunately, there's no sound, so I have to speak during the whole thing, which I was very disappointed when they sent it. I need to get your glasses.
Does it say who the vendor is?
Yes, it's City Logix, Street Scan is the, the main, the main, the company that we're going for is through Street Logix. So we went out to bid for this service, we received quite a number of bids, and we decided to go with City Logix, which is Street Scan. This is a short video, I'm not going to play the whole thing, just the part that we're actually using. So what you'll see is this spring, you'll see a car driving down the street, which has lidar data collection on it, looks like a, almost like a hat on top of the car, there you go. And what it does is it sends out essentially lasers, about 180 degrees in front of it, and it can map anything and everything. So it takes in all the data for trees, street signs, striping, buildings. We are not using all those services, you can pay a lot of money and get all those. We are strictly using the services that it uses when it scans the road. And what it does is it creates, through, using AI, it essentially maps out all the cracks, depressions, deformities, everything it sees within the pavement surface, and it, well, hold on, and it develops what is called a PCI, which is a digital or a number. So this is what the car will look like, and it will provide a number between 0 and 100. And it'll rate each street individually by node and segment. So what that means is it'll go from intersection to intersection. So we'll have, I'm not sure what the number was from the last one, but it's in the thousands of segments. It doesn't take the whole road, it'll grade each segment. We can do cumulative and say, we want to know just full road lengths, what the number is. So like Hotel Road is miles and miles long. We want, if we want the whole road, we'll know, but we typically like to see it in segments, so that we can, well, this small section of Hotel Road is in really bad shape. The whole road isn't in bad shape, just this small section. So we can break it up in any number of ways. And in addition, we also got a good price for sidewalks. So you're going to see a gentleman or woman on a scooter that looks like this, this summer, and they're going to drive every mile of sidewalk that we have within the city, and it'll be doing exactly that same thing, except it'll be focusing on just the sidewalk pavement. So it, it's within three centimeters accuracy, the scanning, everything. So we'll also get a grade, same scoring system, 0 to 100, for all the sidewalks within the city. So that's what you'll see this summer. We expect that they will be done early August, August, September timeframe, so just in time for next year's CIP. And what you'll see in this year's CIP is we do not have money allocated for major reconstruction or reclamation work, because we wanted to have this finished first. So you'll see a reduction in the number, in the amount of money asked for this year's CIP for street road work, till this is completed.
I think the other piece with that, Dan, too, is that, if you, Counsel, if you recall, we did allocate at the end of the budget process last year for CIP, the $3 million for Merrill Road.
Correct.
So that was certainly above and beyond what we normally budget for CIP projects. So if we were to apply that really for this year, we're still staying on track with the amount of funding that we're allocating for road. This is road reconstruction. The other items that Dan has within his engineering budget remain the same, except you'll see an increase for
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah, the Stetson Road Culvert, that's going to be in this, this budget. So the other thing I asked Dan to do is kind of walk through what we currently have as priority roads for the next five years.
Yep.
What we already have, because I know you're, you're often asked, where is my road on this list? A hidden list that the city has, it's not hidden. Dan has it, we can share it, we can talk through.
It's part of your CIP packet that you get every year as well.
Yeah. But I thought it would be good for us to have that conversation. So before we shift to that, is there questions about the process that we're looking, or that we're moving forward with?
Counsel Platts.
Yeah, just a brief one. How, how frequently does City Logix recommend we pay for this service? How many, what's the year interval?
So they'll say every five to 10 years. It depends on how aggressive the city's reconstruction budget is and how, we're in the Northeast unfortunately, so we have a lot of freeze-thaw cycles, which is what essentially destroys our roads and why we have to spend so much money. They'll say every five to 10 years. It's been, I want to say 13 years since we've done it last, and it is definitely time. Our list from 13 years ago is still somewhat accurate, but it, you can see, it, it's not prioritized very well, and it doesn't have any sidewalk information. And it was done by a person going out and grading each road individually, and it is a team of people. So this person might grade this road differently than this person does, and so there's some objectivity to it, or subjectivity to it.
Other questions?
Is the, is the road thing posted, the priority of the roads posted on the website somewhere, or how would someone find out? Is that public information, or is that something we keep private?
We don't keep it private. We put it in your CIP information. So, I mean, if somebody wanted to drill into the
So the PCI data, or the, the number of your, like the 78 versus 74, we've never posted that on the website. We use it as part of our information when we determine which roads we'd like to see. Because a lot of, if, if your road has one house on it, and it's a low PCI, that doesn't mean that that's going to rise to the top of the list to get reconstructed. So we haven't posted it. When it's finished, it'll, I can present it to the, to the council, and they can decide if they want to post it to the website, or disseminate that information up to, it's, it's not a secret, I guess.
But the PCI is only one factor that goes into the prioritization. So I think the bigger issue is what the prioritization is, not necessarily what the PCI is, right? So after the assessment's done, with whatever other data that you take into account in making the prioritize list at engineering, I think that would be valuable to post. You agree?
Yeah, I don't necessarily care what, how we make the sausage, but what's the price of the sausage at the end of the thing?
Counsel Whiting.
Yeah, I just, I thought it was interesting that this is really the first technology-driven report. I didn't realize the other one was done physically by people, and a team of people, which, as you point out, is really likely to have less accurate. This should be unbiased, and hopefully if the equipment works well, it'll be pretty, lacking in any kind of prejudice or whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's extremely accurate. It's within like three centimeters when they scan the road. I mean, that's why if you want to pay for all the bells and whistles, you can do street signs, you can do trees, you can do the painting on the road, you can do a lot of things with it.
And we hired people to do the roads before, or was it staff?
It was, we hired, I believe it was Goro Palmer at the time.
I'm guessing the cost is probably, is it a similar cost?
It was more expensive. Well, in today's dollars, it's more, no one does it by, no one does it by hand anymore. There's different systems or companies that do it, but no one sends out.
And the last time we did it was when?
I want to say it was 2011.
Okay.
Counsel Whiting.
Thank you. So my understanding is with doing this, this CIP, you have nothing in for major reconstruction projects at all?
There's, I believe it's $100,000 for design work, which is kind of a leftover from last year's street list. We get ahead of it. So what happens is, we'll get the list. By the time next year's CIP comes around, if we don't start designing some of the roads that's identified as part of that in this year's budget, we'll be essentially a two-year cycle, because we don't get, July 1, we'll get, well, we don't even get the money July 1. But it, it takes, like Merrill Road is currently out to bid now. So you can see, it takes nine months to get through the whole design process and budgeting and design and right-of-way work and all of that, to get to a point where you can actually go out to bid. So if we don't, we'll have to wait another construction season. So like the, the big items this year are resurfacing, which is just a one to one and a half inch overlay on existing roads that we, like, that have been reconstructed in the past, that are five to 10 years old, that the resurfacing will get us another five to 10 years. There's a lot of money in major drainage, and that's because we need to replace the Stetson Road Culvert. And then the other big one is MDOT match money, which is either 50/50 or an 80/20, depending on the program that we're using. It's a match to state and federal funds for construction projects.
Thank you. I, my biggest thing is, when it comes to budget season this year, I, you know, I always hear roads and bridges. And, and, you know, there's, there's talk about Main Street and other roads, and I would like to, I would like to see probably some more information, working with the city manager and probably you of, you know, even though there's not, but maybe taking a look at that, because maybe the council wants to allocate some money into it. I'm, I'm all for, you know, it's, obviously it costs money, costs a lot of money, but maybe, maybe, you know, and that's the thing, is looking back, I, I don't know how long you've worked for the city of Auburn, and what was our budget a number of years ago, going back 10 years? What was the city, and I know inflation has changed, and that's a little bit of work, but how much was the city spending in roads and bridges, and how much have we cut down? You know, were we spending a lot more, and have we cut down on that budget significantly, which means, because I know, I think in the last budget season, we talked about, it goes from how long until we're actually retouching a, a road or a bridge in the city. We've gone from, what, 25 years is ideal, and now we're somewhere, I think, if I believe, I might be wrong, 50 years, I think? And I may be wrong, but, you know, if we keep decreasing the budget, that number to which we're coming back and, and getting a, a road steadily increases, and, and you know, that's, that's a long time.
So I've been with the city, well, it's been over 14 years. The budget has actually increased for roads, but so is construction costs. So we're kind of on par from where we were about 14 years ago, maybe a little more, depends on the year. Like last year with Merrill Road allocation, we're above what we normally are. But, so, the construction life cycle, we were, if you held funding, it was like 40 years before we hit every road. We've been very aggressive, very aggressive with our match money, and we've cut that down quite a bit. We're in, I knock on wood, we're in a decent place road-wise in that we're, we actually have a repaving, a paving program now, where we can go back and overlay roads that we've reconstructed. And so we're kind of expanding those life cycle of everything we have built, isn't going back to the terrible condition it was before. So we're, we're catching up, I'd say. Like if you drive through New Auburn now, compared to 10 years ago, 15 years ago, it's a totally different experience, and your car will appreciate it. But I can give you a quick rundown of where we are with this year's construction projects, and for the next five years, of what we've identified as some of the roads, which may change as part of the new PCI data. But so, like I said, Stetson Road, Box Culvert, the state posted ahead of schedule, posted a weight limit on that road, and accelerated our replacement of that by a year. That's currently in permitting right now with the Army Corps of Engineers. It's been designed, it's ready. We're hoping to be able to get that out to bid in May or June this year, so that we can hit the construction window, because there's in-water work, and in-water work is limited to, I believe it's July 15 to October 15. And if you're not done October 15, too bad, you get to walk away from the project. So we're hoping to be able to get that done this year, and hit that in-water work window. Currently out to bid is Granite Hillsdale Davis, that's last year's reconstruction list. We are soon to be, well, actually, it is out to bid is the Mount Auburn Ave. That's from the BJ's entrance to the intersection. That's a grind and pave project, so replacing the pavement surface. Loring Ave, you guys will get more information on that at your next council meeting, but that one is currently in design. Perkins Ridge Road and Hershey Hill are, they were just, Gendron is the apparent low bidder, those bids opened last week. Overlays for this year, Soper's Mill, Trap, Pownell, and Pike is the apparent low bidder for that work. Blanchard Road, Spencer Construction is the apparent low bidder for that work. These were all awarded last week, or opened last week. Merrill Road is currently out to bid. Our, as part of our pavement condition rating project, we included retaining walls at that time. Seven of the 20 city identified owning retaining walls have been studied. As part of that, we're doing a consequence of failure, as part of that to help rank which ones we should identify and replace and repair quickly. The MPI, which is a municipal partnership initiative project, that's a combination of state and federal, and local money, no federal money. Spring Street, that's in design, hoping to advertise in April. North Auburn Road overlay is also an MPI project. The state kind of threw us a curveball with that project, where they may do that on their own, depending if they get the money from federal highway. So that's, we're planning on doing it, but we're hoping they're going to do it, so we can not spend local money. Turner Street, Dennison, street improvements, that's an LAP project that will only happen in '27. There's also Turner Street sidewalk extension, that's to build, construct a sidewalk on the Walmart side of Turner Street, from where it ends about French's Lane to Buffalo Wild Wings, there's no sidewalk. And if you drive that, you'll see a lot of people walking on that side of the street, because that's the side that Walmart's on, and those services. So that's a UPI project, which is an urban partnership initiative. That's an MDOT program as well, and that's a 50/50 split. So that's in, or just beginning, we have to go out to RFP to hire a, a engineering firm to do survey, right-of-way work, and all of that that associated with that. And Turner and Hamster Street is also in design. The state will be overlaying Center Street this summer. Yay. We also have in, under study is Minehead Ave and Court Street, which is for complete streets issues and pedestrian traffic safety. And we are also doing a lining project here on Court Street, up front of City Hall, which is to line the 36-inch stormwater. It's actually, it used to be the sewer. It's actually, it used to be the sewer. It's, it's a brick 36-inch. It's not exactly a circle, but it's kind of an egg-shaped pipe that outlets underneath the bridge as part of the INI work or that the district is done. We've identified that there was a cross-connect between the stormwater and the sewer, which is why, uh, we were having sewer overflows. The stormwater would back up in that pipe overflow into the sewer and cause the sewer to overflow. That pipe as part of that project was identified as there's a, two sections that are missing the bricks in the bottom of that pipe and we're going to be lining that to take care of those issues. So that's kind of the, the street construction for the summer and as well as finishing Fourth Street, which is not completed yet. Well, it's incomplete. This is also a little bit of work on Hotel Road. But a lot going on. And for the five-year, I don't know if you want me to read what we have identified for the outgoing five years or I guess I'll turn to the, the mayor. Do you want me to read the list essentially?
Sure.
We have Allied Road identified, um, a portion of Lake. So under recclamation, I'll do it by category so that you can kind of understand a little bit better. Reconstruction, we have Seventh Cliff, Prospect, Fairmount, Howe, all identified. Um, for '27 and '28, Sixth and Cook. '29, School Willow, Goss, Pearl, Oak, Pine. And I'll couch it. These are all dependent on funding as well, so. Um, and then in '30, Sherwood, Sherwood, 19th and Bolster. And then for reclamation projects, we've identified Allied, Jordan School, Eastman Lane, oh, Eastman Lane and Old Porton Road in '28, '29, Witham Road, uh, '30, Western Ave. Pavement resurfacing, Great Falls Plaza, Bailey Roll, Bailey Road, Wilson Hill Road, um, a portion of Turner Street and Hatch. And then '27, South Main Street, Broad Street, Turner Street, Jolene Drive, '28, Fairway, Brandywine, Little Andrew Skoggin, Powderhorn, Shepley, Martindale. Um, and then we haven't identified streets in '29 and '30 yet. Major drainage, the big thing right now is the Stetson Road culvert. MDOT match account, we've, uh, Turner Street, Jolene Drive, Broad Street. In '28, Mill Street and Riverside Drive. In '29, portion of Hotel Road. And then we have an, uh, and then Western Ave and '30. Um, and also another project I'll mention that hopefully will happen this summer. It's a DOT project is the overlay of Main Street from the bridge all the way to, uh, Main, uh, Court Street, so. Any other roads, questions?
Any questions?
I know that was a long kind of list, yeah.
No? Great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
So the next item is an executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 405, 6D, uh, relative to labor negotiations with police command and fire. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Gary. All those in favor? Opposed? The council will be in executive session.
The March third, twenty twenty five Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Councilor Gary.
Good evening. My name is Belinda Gary. I'm a city councillor at large.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, city councillor from Ward one. Good evening. Steve Milks, city councillor, Ward three.
Good evening. Jeff Harmon, mayor.
Good evening. Benjamin Weisner, city councillor, Ward four.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, Ward five.
Good evening. Adam Platt, city council at large.
Phil Kroll, city manager.
And I would note, Councilor Cowan is unable to be with us tonight, has been excused. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the February eighteenth, twenty twenty four regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Councilor Walker.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Milks. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor, opposed, six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is a presentation update regarding the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee by Mr. Allen, the transportation director from AVCOG.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors, staff. This is my first time presenting to council, so I appreciate the invite. I put together a memo annually outlining things that affect our budget and generally present it to the city manager for budget considerations. This year is a bit unique in that we found ourselves at the end of our operating contract with Western Main Transportation. We're federally required to go out to bid for those services, maintenance and operations services every five years. And we, we went ahead and issued that RFP with multiple service variations based on feedback that we received and recommendations received from the area transit study from twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, rider studies and feedback from twenty twenty three. And so this is just kind of a general summary of where L A T C at is at in its budget and proposed service for F Y twenty six. L A T C is requesting one point one eight four million local share. That's split evenly between the cities of Lewiston and Auburn. L A T C owns the ten buses used in the CityLink service, the fixed route buses, the purple buses that you see around town, as well as the Oak Street Bus Station in Lewiston and the downtown Auburn Transportation Center. Recent investment in the fleet has brought the system up to the highest level of state of good repair in years. Typical operating hours are about six AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, and nine to five on Saturdays. Our weekday service, we operate ten bus routes with an average departure time every hour between six and six. And on the weekend, it's, it's seven bus routes every two hours. We also operate an ADA complimentary pair of transit service. Those are the smaller vans you see with handicap lifts for more door-to-door service for handicap passengers that can't access the fixed route system easily. Ridership through the pandemic declined substantially in all transit districts nationwide. CityLink has seen service rebound ever since the mask mandate was listed, lifted in April of twenty two with a slow increase in ridership, netted one point two percent increase year over year, twenty one to twenty two, with a little over two hundred thousand boardings. In twenty three, ridership bloomed over thirty one percent, up to two hundred sixty three thousand. And in F Y twenty four, ridership eclipsed two thousand nineteen pre-pandemic levels. So ridership is back and continues to grow. So far in F Y twenty five, ridership is up an additional eighteen percent year over year. So the system is definitely being utilized. In January twenty three, we did a transit rider survey. About sixty percent of the ridership originates from Lewiston, but about fifty four percent of all the riders in the transit system come to Auburn. Auburn is a net importer of goods and service utilization and purchases throughout riders of the CityLink system. Let's see, statewide, excuse me, system-wide, the average person uses transit three or more times per week and nearly forty eight percent of them use it five days a week. Most common reasons for utilizing transit in our system is there, these riders simply have no other way to get around. They're either zero household vehicles or their economic situation is not one that allows them to have a vehicle or have access to ride share operators like Lyft or Uber. So I did a summary of budget highlights. I guess there's highlights and lowlights anytime you build a budget. So when we sent out the RFP to bid, we got two responsible bidders. RTW's, RTW management is the service that provides the operation of the new L A P bus that runs between Lewiston, Auburn and Portland, the commuter bus. And they were one of the bidders. Their proposal net came in nineteen point four percent higher for F Y, F Y twenty six versus twenty five. And it was lower than Western Main Transportation's, so. With the proposed changes to the system or improvements to the system, there's a streamlining of routes that result, results in a reduction of the amount of diesel that will be burned. So there's a savings in fuel expense there. Minor increases in bus station expenses on the maintenance line. The staff line increases a little bit after two years of reductions because my role has been shared amongst multiple infrastructure operations within AVCOG and on behalf of the cities. Bus advertising, if you've seen the buses, you've seen the stickers on the sides of the buses and insides of the buses. That revenue has continued to increase. They're gaining more and more advertising revenue. Last year, it brought in seventy seven thousand dollars in revenue to the system. They, they have a goal of eighty thousand dollars in their advertising budget for the transit system. We're budgeting sixty five thousand just to be conservative on those side of things.
Larry, just real quick.
Yeah.
I know it's hard to see. Councilors, I have four to do this presentation. I know some of you have your laptops available, but it's just hard to see this distance. I don't know, Larry, if we can maybe zoom in on that PDF.
Try. I don't know. I don't know how much Zoom we can do in PowerPoint.
All right. So they, you have it if you want to try to access it that way.
Yeah.
Just wanna.
How do I go back? There we go. Okay. So main department, there are multiple funding sources for the CityLink Transit System. One of them is Federal Transit Administration funding. We get an apportionment every year. It's based on population, the number of route miles and revenue hours. That is averaging about one point two, one point three million dollars annually from the federal government. The state of Maine also provides an operating subsidy to the transit operation. Over the past five or six years, it's been around ninety eight thousand dollars. In two thousand and twenty four, they bumped that amount to about two hundred and sixty four. And in twenty five, they bumped it to three hundred and sixty four-ish. That funding is not, it was scheduled to sunset, so it was a temporary. They're trying to carry it through in the main DOT work plan, but it hasn't been guaranteed yet, so we can't bank on it. So they have asked us to plan on the ninety eight thousand dollar amount. So that, obviously that impacts the budget negatively on behalf of the cities. The good thing about operations for fiscal year twenty four and twenty five, because we had that additional state funds, those, those state funds are used to offset local share. So we weren't aware of those savings while we were developing our budgets for twenty four and twenty five. And so we use the state money based on the mode of service. If it's just regular operating, it's fifty percent federal, fifty percent non-federal, whether that's state funds or local share. You know, ADA operating is eighty twenty federal, local. Maintenance operations are eighty twenty federal, local. So that's how it all kind of breaks up in the system. And so through the excess funds that the federal government awarded through CARES and ARPA funds, the Transit Committee was awarded grants that helped offset local share for several years. And now we're, we're finding ourselves in a situation through operating that we have a bit of a surplus, which is helping offset some of the impact of these proposed service changes. So anyway, the long and short of it is fuel is proposed to go down about thirty one thousand. Advertising is planned to go up about twenty thousand. And we're looking at a local carry forward of about two hundred thousand because of the way the system has operated over the past couple of years and the excess state funds. Unfortunately, the contract cost has gone up over four hundred thousand. State funds are down two hundred fifty five thousand and the available carry forward is down a hundred thousand over what it's been the last year. The summary of the, the budget line items that we go through at L A T C, obviously it's, it's available for your review. It's, I'm sure it's nearly impossible to see. But when we were looking at the service proposals, which I'm excited to, to show you going forward, we reviewed all of the budget components, the percentages, the federal funds, the state funds, the local funds, and how all of those formulas feed into every scenario of the twelve scenarios of service that we reviewed in the RFP. Ultimately, the, the draft F Y twenty five budget is, is exercising about a hundred thousand dollars in carryover from each city to help offset the overall cost. And the local share request is five hundred ninety two thousand, two hundred ninety eight. There's a bit of a specialized breakdown specific to the bus stations and components that aren't captured in regular service like fixed route ADA or maintenance activities. And that's where a lot of the expenses for the bus stations and a lot of the revenues from advertising and other things are all captured. And I'm happy to go through that in more specifics with anybody. I could come back to any other budget meetings and certainly dig into those things. But I just want to give you a basis for how we got to where we're at right now. Now to talk about the system, the, the background, the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee was created by inter-local agreement between the cities of Lewiston and Auburn in nineteen seventy six. I don't know if everybody knew that. So we go into fiscal twenty six, you're looking at fifty years of, of transit in our, in our cities. Briefly, the organization, little chart is the, is the two cities are the sponsors of the system. The Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee is the governing body that, you know, handles all of the policy and, and operations and oversight of the transit system. AVCOG provides staff to L A T C, that's me, our accounting people, and then our contractor. I also included a, a graphic of the rider survey response, home locations, so you can see where riders throughout the system originate in both cities and, and cities outside of Lewiston and Auburn. General, the current status, the existing service, you can see the picture of the, of the ten routes there listed. There are certain routes that service Lewiston exclusively, routes that service Auburn exclusively, and then routes that carry over between the two cities. So over the past few years, L A T C has been reviewing the recommendations provided in the area transit study. It's about a two hundred page document. It talks about, it goes into great detail about where riders' origins and destinations within the system are and best practices towards improving the system and the rider experience. After reviewing the RFP submissions, again, there were twelve different scenarios to review. The L A T C came up with what we considered the best value for the system. It included system improvements, streamline routes, demand response zones, and, but, but maintain the same operating days and hours. Part of the, part of the transit study and the rider survey that was done in two thousand and twenty, twenty one and twenty three identified twenty five recurring system requests or improvements. These are direct from the riders. So there are twenty five identified improvements to the system that our riders are looking for. Based on the twelve scenarios that we went through and the, and the proposed system operations for F Y twenty five, we were able to satisfy sixteen of those. So the changes in the system are, are answering the call for improvements to our service. And some of these, the ones highlighted in, in the purple are the ones that we are, are part of the proposed service changes. Some of the items that aren't highlighted are actually undertaken right now. Transit operations for second and third shift workers. I'm sure you're aware of, of the LA Works Link, which is providing service on second and third shift. I was actually involved in helping set that up and work that into operation with Western Main and Main DOT. So this is what the system service is. We're hoping this is what we're going to pull off for F Y twenty six. There will still be fixed routes. A lot of them will be streamlined, meaning there will be greater integration between the two bus stations and more direct trips up to Walmart and the mall area where that particular ridership into that area, that is the highest number of riders in and out on any given day. It would create six demand, demand response zones. So current service in Minot Avenue would actually be expanded. If you can see the red line here, the red line here for Patengale Park, this portion of New Auburn. All, all of these outlying areas, the ends of the extremities, so to speak, that's where transit service mode is going to change. And it's actually going to expand service in those areas. It's just, it's just not going to be a big, big purple bus. It'll be the smaller vans and handicap accessible vans operating on a demand response where somebody can call and make reservations weeks in advance. They can call the day before and this contractor has the capacity, provides same-day service as well. And there will be, it can be a landline. It can be a rider-facing app where you can book it on your phone, just like you would an Uber or a Lyft. So it's a great technological advancement for, for the system. It expands coverage down to Exit 75, the industrial park area, which currently is kind of a transit desert. There's not, there aren't any good connections from Lewiston or Auburn down into that area other than jumping on the LAP bus that just started operations. But this is going to give a more flexible footprint to serve the businesses down in that area. Exit 80, same thing, there's a parking ride area there, the VA Center out on Alfred Plour, the Walmart Distribution Center. So these are the, the areas that are actually going to receive more service. You'll see service on Court Street, where there isn't any service on Court Street right now. So it's really laying a foundation for a lot more access to the residents of both cities. And then I have examples of the planned routes, and you can certainly go through all of those. But the key here is that there are a lot more links between the cities. There are many more trips up into the Walmart and the shopping areas. One-seat rides currently out of Lewiston, it's 12 per day. Out of Auburn, it's 12 per day. A one-seat ride is basically you get on a bus and it will get you all the way to your destination. You don't have to switch buses. This new proposal, Lewiston would have 43 one-seat rides a day to the Walmart area. Auburn would have 32. And then between the two cities, there'd be 34 in each direction. So there's a lot of coverage, a lot of growth. You know, we're expecting to see ridership continue to grow. It creates service in Auburn, it creates service on Center Street, where there currently isn't. We just barely touch Center Street, then we get back off. And this is going to create service in both directions, weekdays on Center Street. So all of those businesses along Center Street will, south of the bridge, right, will have access to transit, as well as the housing development areas outside of Center Street. And then just to kind of clarify or define what demand-response is, it's a transit mode with vehicles operating in response to calls from passengers. So it's smaller vehicles, more nimble provides. It can provide door-to-door service within or between demand-response zones. Or it can get you from your area, say in New Auburn or out on Minot Avenue. It can get you to the bus station in Auburn or to Walmart, where you can connect to a fixed-route bus to get you a different part of the city. So there are multiple ways to get folks moved amongst the cities. The vehicles do not operate over a fixed route, so they're, it's flexible, it's on-demand as needed, and that's where they'll service. That was it for my, well, this is a, sorry, it was a map of the demand-response zones. And the areas that were selected for demand-response are currently relatively low ridership. Some of them are five people a week, some of them are half a person a day on average. We are hoping that with the amount of coverage we're going to have in those areas, and we are going to be doing a fair amount of marketing and public information and awareness campaigns, that we're going to see that grow. First-year demand-response is estimated to be about 6,800 people, and it's projected in year three to be about 13,000. So we should see not only a greater service available, but a greater amount of service being utilized.
Questions by the council? Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I would like to get a copy of that, that was wicked good. A few years back, it's been a while, you guys would show up at Barker Townhouse, Espinard, Great Falls Plaza, and do a presentation. You'd bring a bus or a van and show people how you can get on, how you can get off, and the routes. When you have some spare time, could you reestablish that? Because there's been a big overturn in all the senior housing and family developments.
Without a doubt, be happy to do it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council?
A couple of follow-up questions. So what's the fare-on-demand response? Is it the same as a fixed route?
Yep, so LATC is going to have to develop an on-demand policy. We don't currently have one. But it was recommended in the transit study that the fare could be the same as it is for a ride that is reserved at least a day in advance. So it'd be $1.50 for a ride if you called on Friday and you had to get to work every day, Monday through Friday, the following week. You could call and set those rides up in advance, and your fare would be the same. It would be $1.50 on Monday. Potentially, same-day service may be a premium. Maybe it would be 50 cents or an additional dollar. But that's something that LATC has discretion to work through. I don't think that there's... I think that LATC would like to see this adopted as readily as possible through the communities. I think the transition is something that we probably wouldn't be pushing too hard to squeeze a couple extra dollars out of folks for.
And I noticed that one of the pictures you had, I'm assuming, was one of the on-demand vans. It looks like, it looks like the vans the city has for rack 14, 15-person.
Sure.
So I'm assuming this isn't like, I call an Uber and they pick me up and take me exactly where I want to go. I'm assuming there's some routing software involved here because
There is.
they may pick me up at a certain location, but they might start, pick four other people
That's right.
and drop them off along the way.
Yes, that's right. So you don't get exclusive use of the vehicle, it is open to the public. And obviously, if we need to, we'll fill it to capacity and make the most logical delivery route as we can. There are instances where door-to-door service is going to be available. If you were to get picked up out on Minot Avenue and you're going somewhere south on the peninsula in New Auburn, both of those are demand-response zones, so you would get door-to-door service. If you were going to go from, you know, outer Main Street in Lewiston and you needed to get down to, you know, International Paper, that would be a door-to-door service.
Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you still going to have the punch passes and the monthly fares? And if so, are you going to adjust those rates or how that's going to work?
So, so the monthly passes and the punch passes aren't going to go as, aren't going to go away as far as fixed route is concerned. And anything we can do to carry that over into the demand-response side, we will. There will always have to be a cash option for riders who are unbanked. They'll, generally, there will be a paper or punch card option. A lot of those passes are purchased by other folks involved in social services and buying bulk quantities and distributing them to the public. And then we already have, we have our rider app already, Token Transit, where electronic fares can be collected. But that, those types of, those same types of fare structures will be available on the demand-response side.
I usually keep one of those punch passes in my pocketbook in case I get stranded when I'm driving or if I'm not driving.
Sure.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council Platt.
Yeah, just a, thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. What kind of capacity do you see in the buses, call it, at peak ridership?
Yep. So, so right now, there are certain routes and certain times of the month where some routes are very, very full. There have been rare occasions where we've had capacity issues where somebody had to wait. So ridership on a fixed-route system or a demand-response system is not guaranteed. ADA paratransit service, because it's booked a day in advance, it is guaranteed. But fixed-route service is just like, you know, trying to jump on a trolley in San Francisco. It's the same type of concept. So there are certain routes and certain times of the month where it can get pretty tight, but it's not a consistent issue. However, this new model, with the number of ways to get to those destinations, is really going to help dissipate that demand over a bunch of different schedules. You know, we see ridership peaking between 10 and 4 during the day. So you get your early morning departures typically for folks heading to work because it's, you know, transit is used to get people to work 45% of the time, I think, and our rider survey is telling us that. And then, you know, the shopping side of things, and it's not, you know, these people are generally shopping for things they absolutely have to have. I mean, they're going and doing their grocery shop, and they're going to pharmacies, they're going, they're using them for medical trips. You know, these are, these are purposeful rides. So, you know, we want to do everything we can to make sure that we have capacity and we're not dissuading people from using the service. I think the system has grown a bit more reliable over the last few years, and I think the public is really aware of that. It's kind of a general awareness, and they're not afraid, you know, to set themselves up to travel on transit and be disappointed. So, you know, kudos to both cities for supporting, you know, improvements in infrastructure.
Other questions or comments from the council? Not seeing any, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in today and giving us a briefing.
Thank you.
The next item will be the first open session of the evening. Any member of the public that would like to address the City Council on items that are nod on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. We'll move on to new business. The first item is order 190303, 2025, authorizing the Finance Director to execute an agreement with the Auburn-Lewiston Municipal Airport to refinance the outstanding principal on the Hangar Number Five loan for 20 years at 0% interest. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council Platt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Wisner. Mr. Labonte, do you want to provide a short overview for the council and public?
Happy to, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jonathan Labonte serves with the city as the Transportation Director, and in that role, am also serving as the Airport Director for the Board of Directors there. The information sheet, if you had a chance to take a look at it, and we spoke maybe a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, with respect to deferment of fiscal year '23 and '24 loans. Hangar Number Five, a lot of people know it as the Lufthansa Hangar, was purpose-built for a very specific project. The airport did see Elite Airways come in briefly, but both the Lufthansa projects and the Elite projects left the airport upside-down financially. The ability to afford debt service payments when payments weren't being made, or in the case we're in now, a significant debt service payment, about $115,000 a year with utilities in the winter averaging $6,000 to $7,000 a month. We have been very aggressive trying to use that space to attract more tenants, so we have more general aviation tenants at the airport that we otherwise would have seen based in Portland, Augusta, Brunswick, or other airports. So our goal is grow the base aircraft, they buy more fuel, they help us generate more revenue. The dynamic is the current, that current use, we can't generate sufficient revenue to get anywhere close to paying all the operating expenses for that hangar. We did list it for sale or lease. There was lots of interest from folks who would love to have it be high-base warehousing or storage. That's not what that building was built for. We are confident, as we continue to grow the airport, that in the coming years, we will position ourselves for someone to want to be in that hangar that could use it for its intent. Maybe some sort of charter or other operator that may do maintenance on turboprops or jet-engine aircraft. But in the interim, the current operating basis leaves us about $80,000 to $90,000 in the red to just run that building. So the goal of making the airport sustainable is take every business line we have, and are there ways to grind it into a profitable venture or tighten up the losses? So in the case of Hangar Five, it's, can we tighten up our losses there, continue to aggressively market that building and position it so at some point, we can fully retire the debt? At this point, as an interim step, the Airport Board would like to ask each city to refinance the debt service to something that can be more manageable, given the state of the current budget. Happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Labonte? Council Platt.
Just to be clear, as I'm reading the memo, just to be clear. So this, the loan for the hangar was taken out of fund balance in full. This is not something the cities bonded?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the original approach was that the airport, trying to get private financing to buy out the original builder, the interest rate would have been significant. The city, neither city was getting a very strong interest rate on their fund balances, so it was a way to get a higher return on the respective fund balances in lieu of the airport private financing.
Council waiting.
So I guess it'd be safe to say that even though we're, we would be agreeing to a 20-year, you know, debt service, if circumstances change and the airport reaches some sort of good arrangement with somebody leasing or buying, that the airport would then retire the debt sooner based on the ability to do so, you know, from whatever, you know, lessor or purchaser comes through.
Yeah, I'm fairly confident saying that the Airport Board, and certainly me in this role, that the goal is to clean up those books as quickly as we can reasonably do that without putting us back in a negative financial position. So if we're able to find a tenant that will master lease and allow us to more aggressively retire that debt, so we can invest that in other projects, that would be the goal. Or if we get to a point where someone were to buy it. I think what we've seen now is, now that we've operated that building as our own for the last year and a half, it's a pretty key part of running what they call the FBO. So the fuel sales that we do, our ability this time of year, if there's a snowstorm, we're going to have elements, we have a jet that's come in overnight, we can now offer them that hangar at $800 a night. If we didn't have that hangar available, we actually would probably see us losing traffic if there was a chance of inclement weather. They may opt to go to Portland in the summer if there's a chance of thunderstorms because they can get undercover, and we couldn't do that. The way we're running that building, we can base small aircraft, but we can put the larger aircraft in to try to make up some of that revenue upside. And I think anyone in the future, we ever privatize the fuel, the ability to pair those pieces allows them to offer a more compelling package for visitors.
Other questions of Mr. Labonte? No, thank you very much. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, is there further discussion by the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item is order 200303, 2025, authorizing the City Clerk to consolidate to one polling place for the June 10, 2025, school budget validation referendum. Is there a motion?
Motion to move, second.
Moved by Council Walker, seconded by Councilor Milks. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any discussion by the council? Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we usually, for the school vote, have a lower turnout versus a regular election. What's the cost-saving versus absentee that the city has to mail out? I mean, what it costs the cities to mail your ballot versus having three polling places open?
Madam Clerk?
Counselor, to consolidate to one polling place, including absentee voting, it would be approximately $4,000 savings for the city.
Other questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item is order 21- The next item is order two one zero three zero three twenty twenty five, authorizing the city manager to sell fifteen Academy Street, which is parcel ID two three zero dash one thirty-two, and two sixty-one Main Street, which is parcel ID two thirty-one zero zero four. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Wyshner. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. My name is John Cleveland, and I reside at one eighty-three Davis Avenue in Auburn. This is a project that's been going on, actually, for several years, perhaps as far back as twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three for sure, and we're now in twenty twenty-five. It seems to me that might, I have several questions, and I hope that the purpose of the questions will be helpful in reminding me, but I hope all of the public, on what the project is and what what the terms and conditions are in regards to this project. Secondly, I hope that my questions will become memorialized in the minutes, in the written minutes, as well as hopefully perhaps responses to the questions asking. So this is a project known as Auburn Town Center Apartments LLC, and it's at fifteen Academy Street and two sixty-one Main Street in Auburn. As I understand correctly, this is a project that would be at least sixteen market-rate units for rent, that the agreement for purchase and sale has a requirement of a fifty thousand dollar payment for both lots combined. That is also was a program, which I think is still available to this project, which was a downtown incentive program. So, and that incentive program would provide up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project. So my question on both of those, am I accurate with that? Is that the terms for the sale? I also understand that there's a tax increment financing district involved, and within that TIF, there's also a credit enhancement agreement attached to it for the project. Perhaps you might, I'd like to ask, be refreshed on what's the percentage of capture in the TIF? What is the amount that is being provided to the credit enhancement agreement for the developer for this project? How long the TIF is for? And whether that tax incentive program is still available to the developer? Also, can't quite remember what the benefit was that was being derived for the credit enhancement agreement. If you could refresh your memory on what the community benefit was to providing the credit enhancement agreement? Looking over the documents, I understand that Matt Leonard is listed as the signee and manager for this project going going forward or throughout the process. I'm wondering whether the manager is also a sole manager and owner of the LLC? If the, if there's not an owner, a sole ownership, who are the other owners of the LLC for this project to be sold to? And I assume that all the conditions that are listed out in the purchase-sale agreement have been met to provide it to be ready to be authorized to be sold. So those are my questions, and I will sit down and wait for the answers.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, a couple of responses, I think, to Mr. Cleveland's questions. Mr. Holmes will have answers to many of these questions. I'm not sure that he'll have the answers with him tonight, as the focus of this is the authorization to proceed with the sale that's outlined in the prior agreement. So to the extent, Mr. Holmes, that you can answer any of those, that would be great. And if not, if you could follow up with Mr. Cleveland on any information you don't happen to have with you here tonight.
Happy to. Thank you for inviting me over, and I will follow up with those answers to the clerk as well to be included in the minutes so that that can be captured, as you mentioned. For the most part, the easiest answer is that everything he listed is accurate. The sale price is for fifty thousand dollars, of which ten thousand dollars was put into escrow almost a year ago. It is the two lots. The developer has met all the requirements we need to get to this point. Basically, he is ready to go to planning board, and having right title and interested properties is a key factor of that. There are some title issues we need to get taken cleaned up that he can do much easier as a developer with all the different pieces that he's bringing to the table. The incentive money is still potentially available. The credit enhancement agreement is a hundred percent capture. I'd have to look up the percentages. I didn't bring that with me. The percentage, a hundred percent capture, percentage for the credit enhancement, I can't remember the percentage off the top of my head. I think it was fifty fifty, but I want to double check that for you. It's a twenty-five-year TIF. The credit enhancement is capped at one million dollars. The bulk of the benefit to the community was housing itself. The council that approved that was making sure we got a lot more housing, and that was a benefit. There also is a tremendous amount of off-site work that will be done to enhance Academy Street in that area, to make that a better place based on planning and ordinances and codes. Help me with some of the other things, but I mean, yeah, I mean, those are the basic development of it. It has been, I started a conversation about this in twenty twenty-two with the developer, and in twenty twenty-three, April ninth of twenty-four was the, was finally signed, and we have done two extensions for the timeline to get everything, to give them the time to make this happen. It is considerably more than the minimum units that I'm understanding to be developed and what we had originally discussed, but it did have a number of hurdles that had to be overcome, and the developer has continued to spend significant amounts of money to overcome those hurdles and is now at this place.
Thank you. Discussion or questions from the council? Council Plath?
My question, it may still be for Glenn. Don't get too comfy. My question is, do we have any clawbacks after the, after the sale based on site plan results?
So the applicant has to get their, basically get through planning board process. I believe originally it was in April, I think we said until June, simply because of the time right now and what's going on at planning board. And then there is a deadline, a few months after that, the early fall, that they have to start construction, and then they have twelve months to complete construction. So it's obviously, as long as in good faith, those things are all moving forward, and we, they say we want to work with them. But if not, then yes, it is completely, a complete clawback. We would give back the properties and anything we invested.
Other questions from the council? Not seeing any, the council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? And Council Milks, you're abstaining? Abstaining. Six, five having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, and one abstaining, the motion is adopted. The next item is order two two zero three zero three twenty twenty-five, directing the final design and cost of the public safety facility building project to be submitted to the city council for approval. As as background on this for the council and members of the public, you will recall that previously the council approved the referendum question that went out to the public to fund the new public safety building on Minet Avenue, not to exceed forty-five million dollars. And after that vote and before the referendum, the council provided the authorization for the city manager to be able to let the bonds and proceed with the project should the referendum succeed, which it did. So in layman terms, this thing is on autopilot, right? The city manager has no leeway. The project has begun, the design phase is in process, and once the design phase is done and the construction estimates are completed, the city manager would have no other option other to immediately proceed to construction. So given the volatility that we see, some at the state level, but more importantly at the federal level regarding budgets, the city manager and I had a discussion about putting this item on the agenda to give the council more flexibility in the timing of entering into the construction phase. So this item doesn't change the requirement to build the new public safety building on Minet Avenue. Alls it does is provide a checkpoint. So once we have the design completed and we have the construction estimates, the item will come back to the council, so the council can have some oversight as to proceeding to the construction phase, given the potential forward-looking volatility on external funding. So with that explanation, is there a motion?
I would move approval as presented.
It was moved by Council Whiting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Plath. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
I have to, I can't help myself. Andy Tate is twenty-four Ruble Lake Lane. I'm also on the Public Safety Committee, but I'm not speaking for that committee tonight. But I'm glad that this has come forward to you folks to to get you involved. I think it's very important that you do get involved. We know a lot's happened since this referendum question in terms of budgets and costs and what this could do to our capital improvement budgets for many, many, many years to come if we're not careful. So it would be really wonderful to have your input and your help in determining what we're going to do, because this is, again, going to encumber our bonding capabilities for many, many years. And a few million dollar savings here and there, if we can do it, we should be able to do it, and we want to do it. But we'd also like to have input from you folks as well. And I would ask you and invite you to get involved in the process as much as possible before that vote, whenever that vote comes. It may not be this council that will do it, but I think, you know, we're always, we're looking at a ten thousand mile look at right now, but the pricing could come in really quick, and the design could come in quick. So this council could very well hear this. But I wouldn't want you to hear it in a vacuum, that is, to have your meeting and not know what's been going on. So, because this is, again, is a huge decision, what the project looks like, but what it's going to do to future budgets. It's one of the most volatile items I can remember since I've lived in Auburn. So I would appreciate your help in getting involved and in understanding what this means, and we as a budget committee will work, I mean, as a building committee will work very hard to try and deliver the very best for the least amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any discussion by the council? Council Whiting?
Yeah, I agree, there are a lot of moving parts, and one of the things I don't think we mentioned, but, you know, there will be some TIF contribution to this. I'm not sure we even know what that amount is at this point. That may be helpful, but it's not necessarily a guarantee of, you know, financial success, particularly given all the question marks and, you know, the federal level and so on.
Other questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question?
Mr. Mayor? Just one, a couple clarifying points for the council, just so, and especially the public as they're they're viewing this. Did have a long conversation with your legal counsel as we wrote this. To keep in mind, this is a referendum that was passed by the public. This does not circumvent the public's vote in any way. It does put a measure in this process for the council to do the final approval, as the mayor outlined, but it's not to change what the voters had requested. And so that's why the order that was written by legal is clearly defined that the the design should be in alignment with the conceptual plan that was presented to the public when they voted to approve that bond. So so that's what will be coming back before you as you make those decisions. But I just want to make sure that that point is clear, that it's, especially for the public who may be following this closely, is it's not to stop what they had already put in motion, it's just a, another step in the process.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. We'll move on to reports. So for the mayor's report, I guess I have the honor of going first, but I'm sure all the councillors will will join me in congratulating the St. Dom's Boys Basketball Team for capturing the Class D state championship a few days ago. Lot of very exciting games and really proud of the accomplishment of the team. A second item, I was able to attend a briefing at Central Maine Healthcare last Friday. It was mostly around legislative issues that affect the healthcare system, but as part of the meeting, there was a presentation by staff from Prime Healthcare, that is the firm that's, you know, Prime Healthcare Foundation's acquiring Central Maine Healthcare. I found it to be very positive. I think that there is some real positive benefits to come from the acquisition, and I look forward to hearing more from the leadership at Central Maine Healthcare as this rolls out. For the council and the public, some information about the upcoming March schedule and some special meetings that are scheduled. So on our regular schedule, on March seventeenth, there's a regular city council meeting, at which there will be a workshop where the manager will present the FY twenty-six budget. That will be in the in the workshop. Then related budget items following up on Monday, March twenty-fourth, and on Monday, March thirty-first, there'll be special meetings of the council for budget workshops. Those will start at five thirty P M. We got feedback from members of the community last year on the budget that some residents felt it was a bit constraining to be able to give feedback relative to the budget only through the formal process here in the council meetings. So there's going to be two budget town halls that I'm hosting. Any member of the council that would like to participate, welcome to come along, and any member of the public, once the manager provides the budget, I'd welcome you to come in and give us your thoughts on the budget. Those will be on March twenty-seventh, at the, in the community room across the hall here at, from six P M. to seven thirty P M. And on March twenty-ninth, in the Auburn Public Library Conference Room. March twenty-ninth is Saturday. It'll be in the, in the library conference room from two P M. to three thirty P M. And the last scheduling item is there'll be a special meeting of the council on Tuesday, March eighteenth, starting at five thirty P M. for an executive session relative to a personnel issue in which council action is expected at the conclusion of the executive session. So I will ask the communication team to post these on the website and through social media, so the public will have more information about this busy schedule coming up here in March. With that, Council Gary?
Could I ask for us to get a copy of that as well in our emails?
Yeah, we'll send this out. Yep, happy to.
Thank you. From, it's not a sort of a council report, but I want to... Thank you. From, it's not a sort of a council report, but I want to report on our new drop-in center at 121 Mill Street. The guest, as they are like to be called, has been increasing, and they seem to really enjoy the space and the perspective of what can happen in the future. A lot of them are looking forward to the services, that they can do one-stop shopping and won't have to go all over the city to get their needs met. I've got several tenants at Barker where I live that have signed up and want us, that those that have not signed up, that want to sign up to come over and help out there as well.
Thank you, Counsel Whiting.
Just like to note that the Marjorie Schuler Silent Art Auction will be held at the Auburn Public Library on March 29. She was a very generous library user who was a great watercolor artist and donated something like 300 works of art to the library, which the library now will sell a few each year to add to the endowment.
Counsel Milks?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Wiener?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Walker?
Nothing to report tonight.
And Counsel Platte?
Just two quick notes. The school department will be starting its budget process on Wednesday, so that's March 5. And the school department does it by Cost Center. So they're going to be starting with Cost Center 1 on Wednesday. So feel free to tune into that if you want to follow the school's budget process. And then just a quick note on a meeting that many of us attended this past week, the SNRB Sustainability and Natural Resource Board meeting. It was a melding of the minds of all the different working groups. I think it was time well spent, a lot of different perspectives on how to be sustainable as a city. And I appreciated that that word took on many different forms. It took on economic sustainability, sustainability with agriculture and farming, sustainability with our trash. So lots of different ways to, you know, contextualize sustainability. So I thought that was a great conversation. And I think some action items, or at least some suggestions on action items came out of that, that the council can ruminate on over the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Nothing to report.
So we'll move on to our second open session of the night. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the counsel on any items that are not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. There's no further business on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Counsel Walker.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Milks. All those in favor? Opposed? The counsel will be adjourned.